...2017 is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. This meeting will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website. Thank you Director Comstam. Please check the director website for replay times. We're calling this meeting to consider the hiring of Portland's new superintendent. To start the meeting, I'm going to provide an overview of the superintendent recruitment process, ask Director Moore to summarize the position description, and then ask Director Comstam to talk about the match of the candidate that we're going to consider this morning. And then we will introduce a resolution and we will have a board discussion. So I want to provide a, although we've updated the community over the last several weeks, or for the last two months on the process, I wanted to just provide an overview of our process, starting in June when the former board chair, Tom Kurler, appointed a task force that then morphed into the full board's work, but it started in June and we've been working hard all summer. It was an intense and comprehensive process that included public input throughout and that had frequent updates to the community, parents, and staff. First, I'd like to talk about community and public input. In the spring, the prior board conducted public community meetings to determine the community's priorities for the new superintendent. Some of these were targeted meetings with historically underserved populations in our city. We had an online survey that brought in the opinions of hundreds more in the community. The new board retained this really important community input that was previously conducted to sharpen and refocus our position description. We then went back to key stakeholders and asked for more feedback on the position description to make sure that we had it right. It became more focused and connected with what our community wants in a new leader. Our number one priority is hiring an education leader, either a current superintendent or a leader with a large district with experience as an education leader. We did not consider any non-traditional candidates. And Director Moore will talk a little bit more about the specifics of the position description. Second, we, in the superintendent recruitment, we had a much more aggressive, thorough candidate outreach. The new board tapped a new lead search consultant, one with Oregon ties who knows our community. We wanted somebody who knew the different parts of our community, the diversity of it, and the complexity, that could better help us find someone who was a good match. Our search went beyond simply posting a job description. We actively recruited candidates and prospects from the Northwest and the country. We attracted a wide range of highly qualified candidates and successfully narrowed the pool down, first through delving into backgrounds and then by interviewing those who were appropriate to advance in the process. We asked parents, staff, and community members and national leaders to recommend candidates, and they did. It was quite heartening. We had a really vigorous response to our request for people to recommend people who they thought would be good fits, who met our position description. So over a course of six weeks, we received lots of candidates. Second, we, at the very beginning, when we renewed the recruitment, we went back and looked at what happened last year and, you know, what sort of learnings we could take from that recruitment. And we did a number of things differently. In addition to bringing on, tapping a new lead consultant who had familiarity with Oregon, we also looked at the compensation. And I want to thank Directors Anthony and Bailey for all the work they did on this. We asked them to review not only the Northwest market ranges for other superintendents of large districts, but to, in addition to do a national survey of sort of comparable cities with cost of living so that we, when we went out and talked to candidates, that we knew that we could be competitive, but also offer something that, a compensation package that was right for our community, that was fiscally responsible. And so, and we set a market range for the compensation. In addition, we, in terms of the background checks, we went back much further this time than last recruitment. Last time, it went back seven years. This time, we had a much more comprehensive approach to the background checks, just in terms of length and scope. In addition, in terms of, the other part of the process is, we had a reference process and board members actively contacted references. I want to thank Director Moore for compiling and providing a summary to the board. In addition, another aspect that was different this time is, we decided in advance to start the process by very clearly communicating with our candidates that we'd have a standard district contract. It was not to be negotiated after an offer was made, but that we would, we have a pretty standard approach. We'd have competitive compensation, but that our superintendent would have standard healthcare benefits that PPS employees have. They would also be paying their 6% pickup. Another pretty standard things that are, have been included in Portland's superintendent contracts in the past. So that's all been done. Another thing, just to talk about the interview and background reference checking process, the candidate interviews were based on scores of questions and really, again, this, all those community meetings that happened with the board, the prior board, and then our engagement with the community, that really helped us build questions to ask the candidates, what things were important, what our community members wanted to see. The candidate interview questions included things about our unique Portland, things unique to Portland, the candidate's track record of increasing achievement for students, discussions about high school success, college prep, career technical education, ESL, special ed, budgeting, management, facilities, planning, experience with bonds, educational vision, community input, and working with parents and a broad variety of community partners. So that was sort of the scope of what we looked at. We had a very different process this time. I think last time, the candidates who went through the process, I think, would attest to it being very comprehensive, exhaustively comprehensive. But just to provide an overview, the board really wanted to get to know the candidates and their thinking in a variety of formats. We started with more than 40 prospects and candidates. And in the first round, Director Comstam, who was the vice chair of the board at the time, and I personally spoke to, had very lengthy phone conversations or meetings with prospects. And then when we had a list of applicants and the board had narrowed down that group to a group that we felt were qualified, in many ways, not all, because, just to be clear, there's no candidate that's going to perfectly fit our position description, but ones that felt met many of the metrics. Based on that, we then had a long and extensive panel interview by the board with the candidates. And again, more of a traditional panel interview type setting, but exploring a wide variety of topics. And then after that, in the third round, the candidates who then came back, there were basically two parts to that interview process. With the school board, we decided to do something different. We really wanted to see how candidates, since we were all speaking to educational leaders, the candidates, there wasn't anybody non-traditional, we asked all of them to bring data from their district. And we asked them to bring data around three very specific areas, just so we would have an opportunity to talk with them about things that are important to Portland and to Portland students and to Portland families. And the three sort of data sets we asked them to bring was information around third grade reading, data on discipline disparities, and data on the graduation rates. And to have also all of this information disaggregated so we could hear the candidates talk about how they were doing on three areas that are important to our school system and our families. And then we asked them to talk about what they were proud of in that data and where they thought that they had places that they could improve, what they had learned from it, and then how it would be applied, it would apply to Portland. And I think the board members and, we come out in discussion, I think we all found that really revealing in terms of how a candidate would approach the work and how the candidate would work with our teaching staff and the building staff and the people here in the central office, and how they would build a system that supports for students. And really, you know, I think we all listened closely, particularly in the places where improvement was still needed, because frankly, there's places in Portland where we have, we need to improve things for our students. And so those are really rich discussions that we had with the candidates. We also asked what their role was in that, in that work. And at the same time of this third round, we also set up interviews with a half day with two dozen community and staff and employee stakeholders, an opportunity to discuss issues and answer questions. That feedback then was summarized and provided to the board. And that feedback really allowed us then in our next round to really probe deeper on some issues that were raised by people in the community and some of the stakeholders. It allowed us to ask another set of questions. So it prompted, I think, a really full discussion beyond just the sort of expertise that the board members, or the relationships that the board members have. And in addition, that feedback will also be a guide for our transition planning. So Portland Public Schools, as everyone knows, this has been a time of transition and some uncertainty. And we're going to want to build a transition plan that provides stability, that all of our stakeholders have an opportunity to participate in the new work of not only the board but with the new superintendent. The fourth round of interviews, I said it was exhaustive, was individual meetings with board candidates for follow-up questions and additional information. So we started with 40 prospects and candidates, and we narrowed it down to our choice. Several hundred community members have participated in helping the school board hire a new leader. The school board came together quickly, and I really want to thank my fellow board members. This has been a very, a summer that was not free of meetings. It was, we spent a lot of time on this process. But we've narrowed it down to a single candidate. And we really had an opportunity, I think, to combine the strengths and expertise of all the board members, and also just the voice of the community was infused within this process. So I'm excited this morning to be presenting Guadalupe Guerrero as the candidate to be our next superintendent. He's a proven educator who brings a deep understanding of classroom teaching and is connected to what students and children need to succeed. Our goal was to hire an educational leader who is student-focused and is experienced building and sustaining systems to support every student leaving our schools ready for college, career, and life, and he is that leader. And with that, I'm going to ask for a deeper discussion or presentation by both Director Moore and Director Comstam. Director Moore, will you provide the overview of the position description? And Director Comstam, why the board felt that Guadalupe Guerrero was the right candidate and the best match of the candidates that we met with?
The position description is on the website, so if you're interested in the gory details, you can find it there. I'm going to give kind of a, an overview. And I think the best summary is in the opening narrative of the position description. We are looking for a transformational leader who can harness the community's support and work collaboratively with all stakeholders, students, parents, educators, staff, and our communities, to develop a shared vision for the district and create a robust organization capable of implementing it. The ideal candidate will manage PPS as an effective, student-focused organization with a professional culture that embraces transparency, equity, continuous quality improvement, and a commitment to excellence. And we specified some desired characteristics in a few categories. First, an effective systems thinking manager who can work collaboratively with stakeholders to establish a shared vision and an actionable strategic plan for a student-centered school district, who can align fiscal resources, who can build robust and effective management structures capable of implementing large-scale initiatives with fidelity and accountability, establishes district-wide expectations for programs and services to ensure equity and equitable access to educational opportunities for all students, who can oversee the modernization program. Second, a capable communicator and team builder who has demonstrated skills in exercising collaborative leadership to build both a strong district organization and partnerships with stakeholders in pursuit of a shared student-centered vision, who can build a strong district management team, productive relationship with the board, who communicates thoroughly, effectively, and regularly with both the board and the community and all of our stakeholders, fosters a positive professional climate of trust and respect, who has a demonstrated track record of working in diverse urban and/or suburban environments. And the third major category, a knowledgeable and experienced instructional leader who believes deeply in educating the whole child and makes decisions based on their impact on students, who can work with the board and all stakeholders to develop a shared educational vision for the district and a clear strategic plan to deliver it within existing resources, and is fully committed to providing equitable educational opportunities and ensuring safe, nurturing learning environments for all students. So that was our position description.
Thank you Director Moore. Director Comstam, will you please share, based on our sort of months of interviews and conversations, why we believe, again, there's no candidate out there that meets all of, it's not possible. I think no district finds that, but the one that, the candidate, why we felt he matched best of the candidates that we interviewed.
I would be delighted to. So first, addressing Guadalupe Guerrero's experience, going back to when he was a student. He's an English language learner when he entered school in the Bay Area in California, and it was really through his experiences as a student that he started to see education as the pathway for, for all the opportunity that he hoped to find. And so he excelled as a student, bilingual, was involved in, he's an accomplished musician, an accomplished athlete, so really became connected to his own path to his future through his experience in school, went on to become a paraeducator, then an excellent teacher, a principal, an administrator. So these are all experiences that are incredibly important to being able to lead effectively in this role. As a teacher, he was recognized as an instructional leader. This is what led him to his pathway as an administrator, where he was able to really take what he had learned in terms of what is effective teaching in the classroom and try to bring it to a broader systems level and learn with other teachers engaged in the same process and help everyone learn from one another in that process. So in his role in San Francisco, he ended up overseeing a group of struggling schools in the district and really leading a comprehensive strategy to move, to propel those schools to greater success, using student data, using incredible collaboration among the teachers in those schools to really invest in best practices. And the heart of it really was learning together, these opportunities for teachers to take the time to work with one another about what was going on in their classrooms, what was, what they were seeing as pivotal in terms of leading to student success. So this was some of the data that we reviewed as a board that Julia referred to in our selection process. We really spent a lot of time with data on this set of schools that he oversaw. He was the architect of the professional development for that initiative, working with the teachers and administrators. We also had the opportunity to talk with some of the principals in those schools. And one of the conversations I had with a principal of one of those schools was interesting in that he said that as a teacher and an administrator, during that time, he felt like he was on a parallel path with his students, that his, his learning and growth as an educator was just as phenomenal as the gains that he saw his students make. And I thought that that was really an interesting comment. So really, a strong instructional leader, and then a systems thinker. As Rita mentioned, that was an important part of our position description and what we were looking for in terms of being able to harness the resources of central office in service to schools and in service to student success. So we heard that again and again in the people we spoke to about his experiences, that he, he's able to craft a vision and then figure out what is the implementation plan for making sure that this is successful in service to our students. And that's really exactly the kind of skills that we were looking for, and it was clear that he's been able to do that. I think the next thing I want to focus on is that he has really had a tremendous focus on equity and historically underserved students. In his last school district, San Francisco, is a relatively high-performing school district, but it had a huge achievement gap. And that was his primary focus there, was to figure out how to make real progress with those students who clearly hadn't been served well by the district. And that, again, is some of the positive data that we reviewed. His focus on equity is something that he's very passionate about talking about because it comes from his personal experience and how his life changed by his opportunity to pursue a path in education. So I look forward to him being able to share that with his story with everyone in our school district. Next, you know, he is really well-prepared for this role. In this process, we had a pool that included successful sitting superintendents who have had experience in that top job, as well as others who didn't. Guadalupe Guerrero obviously has not been a superintendent. He's been a deputy in a large complex school district. But he has assiduously prepared himself for the role, both in terms of the experiences that he's had in schools and in administration, but also in his educational pathway, his work at Harvard, his work with Superintendent Training Program, his affiliation with all sorts of national support organizations that continue to give him insights. He also is really a lifelong learner, and part of that is his commitment to having personal mentors for him to develop in his role. And some of his particular personal mentors are some of the most respected superintendents in the country. So that's another really tremendous asset that he brings to this role. And, you know, lastly, I would just speak to his, his honed but intrinsic leadership abilities and his, his personal integrity. First and foremost, it's really clear he has a tremendous love of learning. The personal joy and satisfaction that you can see when he talks about seeing individual students make gains, and particularly students who might have been stuck or students who have been historically underserved, is really inspiring. He has a great passion for this work. He, he really has a steadfast belief that every child can succeed and that our system and all the educators and adults connected to it need to carry that belief with them at all times. So I think another aspect that was important for us to look at was, were not just his qualifications, but how do we envision this person as a leader of our team, of our, you know, every single person that works from this district, from the newly hired paint crew downstairs to our paraeducators, to our nutrition services workers, to our bus drivers, to our teachers, to our central office staff, you know, how can he connect with their experience in their jobs and provide strong and inspiring leadership? And I think, given the personal qualities we've seen and the dedication he's had to his career thus far and the results he's gotten, I think we feel a high, high degree of confidence that he's the match for this system.
Thank you Director Comstam. And will everybody else have a chance to speak during the discussion phase? There's just two more things before we actually consider the resolution that I wanted to add. When I discussed the contract, I did not mention that there's just, there's a sort of two provisions. One's dependent on, obviously, on getting an Oregon superintendent's license. It's clear, so he's applied for it already. And then just the final fingerprint background check coming through, but that's provisioned in the contract. And then the second thing I wanted to do before we start on the board consideration is I wanted to thank the senior board manager, Roseanne. Where is she? She's off doing something.
She's off being helpful.
This process, we wouldn't, oh, she's, we don't need anything, Roseanne, we were just thanking you for all the support you've provided the board over the last two months. It's been quite remarkable, and at all hours I can attest. And since three of the seven board members are night owls, often that was after midnight. I also wanted to thank Karen Housen for her support, and also the full communications team that as we sought to really, throughout the process, inform the broader community about what we were doing and our approach and provide for feedback, that the communication staff really helped us get the word out over the summer to parents and family. And also appreciate the translation team when we sent over, you know, multiple times over the last two months, a request to have things translated on pretty short notice so that all of our families would have access to the information, that they provided it quickly, even during the summer months. So I want to just acknowledge that support that we received. With that, the board's going to now consider Resolution 5496. You all have the resolution in front of you. It's a resolution. There's a number of recitals, but the resolution would be to the Board of Education, vote to authorize and approve an offer to be extended to Guadalupe Guerrero to be the superintendent at Portland Public Schools. And with that, I'd like Director Asparza Brown to make the motion.
I move that the board, that the board, I extend an offer to Guadalupe Guerrero for the position of superintendent of PPS.
Sarah, a second?
Second.
Everyone? Let it be noted that Director Asparza Brown has moved that Guadalupe Guerrero have an offer extended to him to be the next superintendent, and that it's been seconded by many parties on the board. At this, at this point, I'd ask for board discussion on the resolution, and I'm going to ask Director Asparza Brown to kick this off if you're ready, and let us know if you'd rather have us start with somebody else.
No, no, I would, I would love to. I'm honored. As a Latina and speaking for the Latino community of Portland, I think that this is a historic day. I am so thrilled that we are at this point of hiring our next leader and am absolutely certain that Mr. Guerrero has the skills certain that Mr. Guerrero has the skills and, and the knowledge and, and the gonads, as we would say, really, the will and determination to make the changes needed so that we close those historic achievement gaps. He is laser-focused in that area. Further, this is making history in that, in the history of Portland Public Schools, we have not had a Latino superintendent. And I'm thrilled for the sixteen percent of Latino students in the district that will have a role model. And we will create different narratives for them. I think just having him in the role offers so much to our Latino students that sometimes, you know, have to look long and hard to find Latinos in leadership positions. So, for many reasons, I, I cannot be more, more pleased that we are at this point of extending an offer to this highly skilled educator with a very unique road himself as an English learner, who was able to excel academically and, as has been noted before, he is an accomplished musician. He was an Eagle Scout. He, he brings so many qualities of, that, that we, that we admire in not only our community but the broader community. So, I, I am, once again, just thrilled that we, we are here and looking forward to a long history together and looking forward to, as we proceed collaboratively, to really bring together all of the, you know, creative vision, a new vision for our district.
Thank you, Director Esparza Brown. And I'm going to say that it was really a pleasure to have you as part of the process because I think you really sort of tested our candidates and their knowledge of their process, just given your background and education and your expertise, that I felt like we got to a depth of a conversation about our candidates that, with our candidates that we wouldn't have had without you at the table. So, thank you for your, your participation. I'm going to-
Well, thank you, and I wish I could be there today in person.
We, we wish you could be here as well. I'm just going to, from an order standpoint, unless Director Rosen, you're not ready, I'm just going to start just and go down the, the row. You can defer to Director Bailey, Bailey, if you want to, but if you're not ready, but sorry.
So, I just wanted to thank all the board members for their hard work to get to this point. Julia was right, we all, was all hands on deck, especially the last week, and it was pretty intense. And say that how pleased I am that Mr. Guadalupe Guerrero is going to become our leader as a superintendent. He's eminently qualified, and I've really been impressed with him during the interviews, especially his use of data, his flexibility in responding to data and making adjustments along the way. And I'll just close by saying how excited I am that it's Friday and it's such a special Friday for Portland Public Schools.
Director Bailey?
Yeah, I'm just really excited and enthusiastic. After the second interview with Guadalupe, he left the room and I said, "Let's hire this guy. Call him back." I was ready then. Of course, we had other great candidates too, so it was a little tongue-in-cheek, but that, that's, that's where we ended up. So, I'm, I'm really excited that we have, I think, a great leader coming on board. And, and yeah, you know, we worked really well together on this process, and that, that, that was pretty sweet as well.
I'm going to pass it down, but I'm just going to build on one thing that Director Bailey said is that we had some great candidates, and we had some people who had been National Superintendent of the Year, who had directed districts for a long period of time, who had great data. So, you know, they'd been big, small, medium-sized districts, complex districts, successful track records. So, at every stage of the process, we found it really difficult to narrow it down. So, it was not, we didn't take Director Bailey's admonition, but we really had a thorough-
Said tongue-in-cheek.
Yes. Director Moore?
Yeah, I just want to say a little bit more about that. I was so impressed by the pool of candidates we got. And I will admit that the idea of being able to successfully conclude a superintendent search in two months and have somebody named by the time school started this year, I have to say in June, that, that struck me as a-
Pipe dream?
Yeah.
You're always the skeptic.
I am the skeptic. And, and I was just blown away by the pool of candidates that we got. And it was difficult to, to, to narrow the field as we went. So, I am, I'm thrilled that Guadalupe Guerrero is, is going to be coming to Portland. I am, I am really confident that he's got the, the mix of skills and, and the kind of passion and the commitment, the commitment to Portland even. I mean, this is a guy who I think we're pretty confident is going to be here to see through this transformation. I mean, this is, this is as good as I could have hoped. So, I'm, I am excited. I'm hoping everybody else is as excited as we are, and I think all of us just can't wait to start working with this guy. I think this is going to be great for Portland students.
Director Moore, Director Konstam?
Just to build on Rita's point, I want to reiterate that I do, it was a tough decision, but one that I think we all have more confidence in because we did have a good pool of candidates. And I want to call out Hank Harris and HYA Associates for their help in this process and really beating the bushes to bring forward some great candidates. And I think what's most exciting to me about Guadalupe Guerrero is that he sees a wonderful opportunity here. He has a very hopeful and optimistic intention about how we're all going to work together to strengthen our school system for our students. And that's really exciting. I hope that he's able to, to sort of bring that to all of our teachers and all of our staff in our schools so that we can, we can begin an era of real momentum for our kids.
Director Anthony?
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat what's been said about Mr. Guerrero's experience, his abilities, and his values, which I think are just exceptional. But I do want to say that leaders in San Francisco United and community leaders in San Francisco have spoken glowingly to me about Mr. Guerrero's ability to work productively with politicians and political bodies at all levels and of all stripes. He's spent years successfully lobbying successive iterations of the San Francisco Board of Education, San Francisco Board of Supervisors, California State Legislature, and the California Governor's Office. It's very clear to me that in this year of cut budgets for districts across the state, that Mr. Guerrero will be both the educational and the community leader Portland Public Schools and the state of Oregon need to secure our students and our teachers, the resources they need to succeed.
Thank you, Director Anthony. Is there any other, Director Rosen, please?
So, I just wanted, since we're thanking people, I want to say one last thing and build off of what Scott said. This really was a team effort, and we worked extraordinarily well together and hard together. But it was under the leadership of Chair Brim Edwards, and I want to thank you personally for all your hard work and for the vice chairs, Julia Esparza Brown and Rita Moore. If anyone worked the hardest, it was those three, so thank you.
Anything else? So, I'm just going to say before we have our vote, if I'm assuming if we have a positive vote and acceptance of the offer, we're going to need the whole community to work together to really serve our students well. So, this isn't, we're, we're, so just board members, we're not done. We're not just handing a project off to a new superintendent, that this will be an effort to make our schools strong and serve every student, is going to be a collaborative team process with a new superintendent who's going to need a lot of support. He doesn't know Portland, so we need to welcome him and all develop, really work collaboratively together, not only the board but the superintendent, senior staff, building staff. And I know, just because of conversations I've had, that that is the spirit with which Guadalupe will approach the work as well. So, Director Konstam?
I have one last, thank you. Can it, it can wait till after, or?
Go ahead.
I just want to thank our interim superintendent, Yusuf Awad, for stepping into the breach here and adding a lot of job responsibilities to his already heavy lift overseeing our operations side of our house here. And obviously, our new superintendent is not going to show up tomorrow, so we'll still need to rely on Yusuf's leadership in the coming days. So, thank you very much for stepping into this tough role, and we'll just keep on, keep it on. Thank you very much, Yusuf.
I second that, Amy.
Yes, I think-
Director Konstam? Yes, I very much appreciate how, the competent hands that our district has done now in this transition time. Thank you.
I think the, the full board agrees with Director Konstam and Director Esparza Brown, so thank you for noting that. The board will now vote on Resolution 5496 instead of just a, a regular voice, voice?
Voice.
Voice vote. I'm going to ask for Ms. Housen to call the roll, please. Director Rosen?
Yes.
Director Bailey?
Yes.
Director Esparza Brown?
Absolutely, yes.
Director Moore?
Yes.
Director Konstam?
Yes.
Director Anthony?
Yes.
And Chair Brim Edwards. Yes. So, I'm delighted to announce that Resolution 5496 authorizing the Board of Education to approve an offer be extended to Guadalupe Guerrero to be the superintendent of Portland Public Schools has been approved, and the meeting is adjourned.
Yes. (applause).
Thank you.
Yes.[1788.73][1788.73](applause).
Thank you. 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 Thank you.